I'd like to call the city council meeting of March 18th, 2014 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Teddy.
Here.
Kennett.
Here.
Shotmar.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join me and resign to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating and justice for all.
Under the mayor's announcement, proclamations and recognitions, I have a special honor tonight to read the following proclamation. Whereas first created as a badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782, the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration presently in use. Whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award, declaration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. Whereas many former residents of Fayetteville who have made the ultimate sacrifice in giving their lives in the cause of freedom and numerous combat wounded veterans currently reside within this city and contribute to this community in countless ways. Whereas chartered by an act of Congress, the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism support, legislative initiatives, and most important, make sure we never forget. Whereas we appreciate the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the support they have earned. Whereas the City of Fayetteville wishes to pledge its strong support to the Military Order of the Purple Heart and for those who put their lives at risk in service of their country and their fellow citizens. Therefore, I, Lionel Jordan, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim that the City of Fayetteville is a Purple Heart City. And witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and cause to seal the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, to be affixed on the 18th day of March, 2014. And with that, I wish to introduce Jose J. Martinez, Commander, Department of the Arkansas Military Order of the Purple Heart.
I'd like to present something to the city in recognition of all the support that you give the combat veterans of the state as well as the city of Fayetteville. They are additional members of the local chapter in the back. And I also am proud to announce and recognize our national adjutant, Vaslava, who is sitting in the back right here with me.
Judge Advocate.
Judge, I'm sorry, Judge Advocate. And also, the junior vice, Chuck Atkinson, the commander of the local Fayetteville chapter, Steve Graham, and my favorite friend, Mr. Porter. I'll read the proclamation, which is just in behalf of us military persons, and I'll bring it up to you. You don't have to get up and come down.
It's all right. I don't mind.
Okay. Come on down.
Mayor Jordan, I'd like to present you, behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, as this small vote, recognizing the City of Fayetteville as a Purple Heart City on behalf of all the patrons and combat wounded veterans of the state and city of Fayetteville. So thank you.
On behalf of all the citizens of the city, as given Canada 460, City of Fayetteville, Lord Huron, of the Purple Heart, would like to give you this compendium for technical merit for his continuous service in the military for the Purple Heart. Technically thereof, and express your appreciation and gratitude for the services we have worked in citation. Appreciate all your support.
The Purple Heart is a part of you and me.
This is from me to you. Now you've got to stand.
Good saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I would also recognize tonight, we have with us University of Arkansas students from Ray Minor and Gina Skelton's News One classes. Would you all stand up and be recognized? Oh, good. This is a very busy evening, isn't it? Next, we have the nominating committee report. I believe, Adella, you have that thoughts?
Yes.
I am sorry.
That's okay.
We have a new chair. May I introduce Justin Kennett as our new nominating committee chair?
Thank you, Adella. Okay. Nominating committee report, Wednesday, March 12th. We had our nomination committee meeting that night, did interviews for our normal short and sweet five hours or so. And I'd like to read those now, if I may, sir.
Absolute.
The mayor recommends the following candidate for appointment to the Fayetteville Public Library Board of Trustees, Hershey Garner, one citizen at large term, ending April 1st of 2019. The advertising and promotion recommends the following candidate for appointment for the Advertising and Promotions Commission, Ching Mong, one tourism industry term, ending March 31st of 2018. The nominating committee recommends the following candidates for appointment. City Board of Health, we had no applicants, for the one unexpired physician term, ending 12/31/2016. For the Civil Service Commission, we have Bo Biddle, one citizen at large term, ending March 31st of 2020. Betty Martin, one citizen at large term, ending March 31st, 2020. And Jules Beck, one unexpired citizen at large term, ending March 31st, 2019. On the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we have James Cherry, one citizen at large term, ending March 31st, 2019. Nathan Morton, one citizen at large alternate member term, ending March 31st, 2015. And Chris Brackett, one citizen at large alternate member term, ending March 31st, 2015. For the Planning Commission, we have Kyle Cook, one citizen at large term, ending March 31st of 2017. Tracy Hoskins, one citizen at large term, ending March 31st, 2017. And Janet Selby, one citizen at large term, ending March 31st of 2017. For the Telecommunications Board, we have Dustin Seaton, one citizen at large term, ending June 30th, 2018. And Alex Baldwin, one citizen at large term, ending June 30th of 2018. And for the Town and Gown Advisory Committee, we have Victoria Whitfield, one University of Arkansas student, unexpired term, ending September 30th, 2015. That is the report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to accept the nominating committee's nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to accept the nominating committee's nominations. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Okay, another consent agenda. Number one, approval of the March 4th, 2014, city council meeting minutes. Number two, 2013 Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Program Grant, resolution to authorize acceptance of a non-matching continuation sub grant for 2013 from the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Program Grant in the amount of $13,507.53 and to approve a budget adjustment. Number three, Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, resolution to approve a budget adjustment in total amount of $115,952, recognizing revenue from the Office of the National Drug Control Policy Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Number four, State Drug Crime Enforcement and Prosecution Fund Grant, resolution to approve $56,250 grant from the State Drug Crime Enforcement and Prosecution Fund to be matched by $14,062.50 from city funds to be used by the Fourth Judicial District Drug Task Force and to approve budget adjustment. Number five, InstaForm Technologies Incorporated Resolution to approve a contract extension with InstaForm Technologies Incorporated in the amount of not to exceed $330,000 sanitary sewer lining services procured in place sanitary sewer linings. Number six, Arkansas State Highway Commission Resolution Authorizing Sale Approximately 4.28 Acres of Rideaway and a Temporary Construction Easement to the Arkansas State Highway Commission for a total amount of $15,050 to facilitate the replacement of the Highway 16 Bridge across Middle Fork of the White River. Number seven, Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department Resolution to approve a payment of $580,000, the Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department representing the city's portion of construction costs related to the widening of Razorback Road, to approve a project contingency in the amount of $50,000 and to approve budget adjustment. Number eight, Fayetteville Alert System Resolution to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $66,500 to provide funding for a marketing and communication campaign for the Fayetteville Alert System. And number nine, Source Gas Arkansas Incorporated Resolution to approve a cost share utility work agreement with Source Gas Arkansas Incorporated in the amount of $72,277.19 for the relocation of gas mains and facilities necessary for the Van Ash Drive Project and to approve a project contingency of $14,455. I will accept the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to accept consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Number one, amend Chapter 178, under Unfinished Business. An ordinance to repeal 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property and enact a replacement 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property to enact 178.05 Food Truck Limited Time Permit to change the section number of the transient merchants from 178.05 to 178.06 and to amend 97.086 Vending and Pedaling. And I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
An ordinance to repeal Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property and enact a replacement Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property to enact Section 178.05 Food Truck Limited Time Permit to change the section number of transient merchants from 178.05 to 178.06 and to amend Section 97.086 Vending and Pedaling. My memory is that we amended it to this version at the last meeting.
That's what I kind of remember. Is anybody?
I'm looking.
No?
Just one second.
I'd like to get that look.
Make sure we're on the right.
Do you need to read it again, Kit?
No, I don't need to read it again, I don't think.
Okay.
Kit, I believe you mentioned at the agenda session last week that you needed an amendment at this meeting to change the title.
So we did not amend the last meeting?
No.
Okay, then we do need an amendment to the one that I, the title I just read and also the body of that particular one, and I will read the body once the motion to amend has been stated.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion a second to amend. What are we amending, Kit?
To the one that's actually in your packet on page nine of 82, which is the one that is going to be the current one. It was slightly changed because they decided not to repeal Section 178.03 and other changes.
All right, has everybody got that? All right. I don't know if I do exactly or not, but anyway. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
This is a result of the changes made by the Ordinance Review Committee, so let me read the body. I've already read the title.
Okay.
Beordordane by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. At the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby repeal Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property and enact Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property as shown on Exhibit A attached here, too. Section 2, at the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby changes the section number of transient merchants from Section 178.05 to Section 178.06. Section 3, the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby enacts a new Section 178.05 Food Trucks Limited Time Permit as shown on Exhibit B. And Section 4, at the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby amend Section 97.086 Vending and Pedaling by enacting subsections C and D as shown on Exhibit D.
Okay. Peter.
Mayor, Council. The ordinance that is before you this evening is the result of significant discussion and conversation and is being presented as recommended by the City Council Ordinance Review Committee. You first, you all first discussed this on November 19th. At that time, you recommended forwarding this ordinance to the Ordinance Review Committee. They discussed it on December 19th and then again on February 20th. And I'll attempt to go through the changes from what was originally presented and what is in the proposed ordinance tonight. As mentioned by the city attorney, under Section 178.03, there are currently no changes recommended to that section. Originally, we had proposed inclusion of food truck language governing food trucks in that section. We have since removed that language in there, so there are currently no changes to 178.03, and that was the need for the amendment that Kit mentioned. Under Section 178.04, Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property, the first change proposed to that section is a proposal to include language that requires that mobile vendors meet the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act if the public is allowed to have access to the interior of their mobile vending units. The second change is an extension of what's being called temporary permits. Currently, a temporary permit is allowed for a mobile vendor for up to 90 days. That is being proposed to be extended to six months. That permit would be issued by the planning department, planning staff, and at the end of that six-month period, a mobile vendor would have two options. They would be able to either relocate up to at least one quarter mile away and obtain another six-month permit at that location, or they could apply for an annual permit in the same location. And that annual permit process would require a similar review, but instead of just requiring the planning staff to sign off on it, the applicant actually has to go to the full Planning Commission to get that annual permit. Once the mobile vendor got an annual permit, they could reapply year after year for an annual permit in that same location with, of course, Planning Commission sign off every year. For both the annual permit and the six-month permit, there is a requirement that mobile vendors not duplicate or match the primary food or beverage offering of the business located directly next door. So for example, if a mobile vendor wanted to locate next to McDonald's, they could not serve hamburgers from that mobile vending unit. That replaces older language that was sometimes problematic and difficult for planning staff to make findings on, which required that the mobile vendor not adversely affect a nearby permanent business. The next change is an attempt to decouple or separate permits for property owners from mobile vendors, and that is being done by the creation of a mobile vendor court conditional use process that would be permitted through the Planning Commission. That conditional use, the granting of that conditional use would be to the property owner and not to the mobile vendors, and that would allow for mobile vending to occur on that property. Then mobile vendors would be able to locate on that property and to locate in a permitted mobile vendor court, a mobile vendor would not have to have a six-month or an annual permit, but would just have to submit some basic information to planning staff before locating on that property. As part of that conditional use process, the Planning Commission could require site improvements such as restrooms, utility connections, and pedestrian and safety improvements to the property as part of that mobile vendor court conditional use process. Then there's a few other changes proposed to Section 178.04 that exempt some businesses that are already covered in other chapters, and there's a list of prohibited conduct that outlines suspension or revoking of a permit. Under 178, Chapter 178.05, which is being called Food Truck Limited Time Permit, that is where the regulations related to food trucks have been moved. Food trucks are being regulated under two different permits, one for food trucks located on private property and one for food trucks located on public property. Both would be allowed to operate for up to four hours in one location. Food trucks on public property would be allowed to locate either in marked parallel on-street parking places or in public parks. There would be a limit, though, to the number of permits granted to food trucks allowed on public property, and the proposal is for up to three permits to be available that would be drawn like a lottery for those three permits. There's also written into the ordinance, the ability to expand that number of permits as the number of permit applications grows, and the proposal is for the available number of permits to be one-third of the total number of applications received. So for example, if planning staff received 12 permit applications, one-third of that number would be four available permits, but the minimum number of permits would be three. So food trucks that would want to locate, that did get a permit to locate on public property, would not be able to locate directly in front of a restaurant or in front of a public pay station. They would also not be allowed to locate in angled parking places or in spaces marked for, as part of our residential parking program, and they must fit entirely within one marked parallel parking space. For food trucks that want to locate on private property, there is no limit to the number of private property permits. Those food truck operators must, of course, have permission from the private property owner, and they must locate only in zoning districts where the use is allowed by that underlying zoning. Chapter 178.06, Transient Merchants, the only change there is simply moving that entire body of language from 178.05 to 178.06, no change at all to the language. And then finally, there's a proposed amendment to Section 97.086 Vending and Pedaling, which is out of the Parks Chapter. That goes along with the food trucks piece, and that would allow the food trucks to locate in the public parks. With some exceptions, they're not allowed to locate in areas that are being actively served by contracted concessionaires. In those parks that do have contracted concessionaires, there's maps in your packet for six parks where those food trucks could locate while the concessionaires are operating, but all other areas would be off limits in those parks while the contracted concessionaires are operating. That essentially summarizes the proposal, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have for Peter on this? Sarah? Oh, I thought you had a question. I thought you'd raise your hand, I'm sorry. Any questions? Okay. What would like to speak to us from the public on this issue?
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Clark, and I am a lawyer representing the Yacht Club. And on behalf of my client, I would like to sincerely thank the Ordinance Review Committee and Council and planning staff for the work that has gone into the revisions of this particular ordinance. The revision that includes the mobile vendor courts makes a huge difference and will permit the Yacht Club to continue operation and continue the incubation of these businesses that have now grown into brick-and-mortar businesses. So I'm here really just to say thank you, because this does do just what we asked you to do. It was very important to me that the language was drafted to discuss adequate restroom facilities rather than permanent structures and that sort of thing. The one thing I did want to raise just as a caution, the introduction of the language regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act, I did mention before, I think the language is superfluous, but the language itself is not problematic, but from what my client is telling me, it's being interpreted to imply that these trailers cannot allow the public in unless they're fully equipped with ramps and able to navigate wheelchairs inside and that sort of thing. I did have a discussion with Mr. Williams prior to this, and I would just ask that our city attorney discuss with planning some of the exceptions within ADA and why we should be able to allow public in the trailers.
And my understanding with this is that simply that they must comply with the ADA, and the ADA has many different sections within it, and there's reasonable accommodations and there are things that are not required. So I think that planning understands that, and hopefully, we will make sure that we won't have any mistakes on that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Who else would like to address us on this?
I'm Cynthia Morris, the landlord of the Yacht Club, and I just want to say thank you so much. We've had so many people come through the Yacht Club and start businesses from scratch as you come out of a recession. Many people are trying to start their own business, and this has been very important to about six different businesses that have started there and have moved on to brick-and-mortar in our town. Thank you so much. You've put so much time and effort into helping work this out. It shows that we're a city that understands what's going on, and I really appreciate it. And we hope that this helps and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Yes.
Well, unless there are compelling objections, I'd really like to get this passed tonight. We've been working on this very hard for some time, and I'd like to personally thank Alderman Long for chairing our ordinance review committee meetings. We got a lot of work done in those meetings and made this ordinance a lot better, and that's thanks to his leadership. I know, I don't know if anybody would like to propose an amendment, but if not, I'll put this on the third reading.
Second. A motion second, go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Okay. Number two, RZN 13-4538 Razorback Road Victory Commons. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4538, for approximately 5.09 acres located at 731 South Razorback Road from I-1 Heavy Commercial and Light Industrial to UT Urban Thoroughfare. Let's see, this was tabled, so...
It was tabled indefinitely, and so to remove it from the table, we need a motion to remove it from the table.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion a second to remove the table. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Yes.
This is now off the table and in front of you.
Okay. Chairman.
Mayor, this has been before you several times, but I don't believe I've ever actually gone through the items, so I want to do that tonight. This property is located at 731 South Razorback Road. The property is within an I-1 Heavy Commercial and Light Industrial zoning district and contains several lots of around five acres. Currently has an existing warehouse building of approximately a little over 12,000 square feet, built in the 1970s.
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Shopmart?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, RZN 13-4538, Razorback Road, Victory Commons. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4538, for approximately 5.09 acres, located at 731 South Razorback Road from I-1 Heavy Commercial and Light Industrial to UT Urban Thoroughfare. Let's see, this was tabled, so...
It was tabled indefinitely, and so to remove from the table, we need a motion to remove it from the table.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove the table. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Shopmart?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, RZN 13-4538, Razorback Road, Victory Commons.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4538, for approximately 5.09 acres, located at 731 South Razorback Road from I-1 Heavy Commercial and Light Industrial to UT Urban Thoroughfare.
Okay. It's the applicant here, I'm sure Mr. Hoskins is here somewhere. Oh, there he is. Yes, Tracy, would you like to address us on this?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is a project that was before you previously, had a few things we needed to work out. I think we've got those worked out, and so, so if we're rezoning, if we've got any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hoskins? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Okay. See, now I'll bring it back to the council. Okay. It's left on the second reading, we need a motion to go...
On the third and final reading.
All right, sorry. Any final comments then from the council? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Shopmart?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, ADM 13-4331, men chapters 151, 162, 163, and 164. An ordinance to amend 164.01, I mean 10, garage and/or agricultural and produce sales 161.10, unit 24, home occupation 163.08, home occupations and 164.04, urban agricultural valleys and goats of Unified Development Code. Let's see. It was left on the third reading.
It's already been read, it was tabled after that, so...
Peter, take it away.
Mayor, Council, good evening again. This is the Urban Agriculture Ordinance. As the mayor mentioned, it is actually a series of four different, changes to four different sections of the Unified Development Code in support of greater access to urban agriculture for the citizens of Fayetteville. The only thing new that I have on this this week is a letter that we received, I believe that is in your packet. It was from the National Center for Appropriate Technology, NCAT, their Fayetteville office, in support of the positive aspects of the ordinance related to urban goat keeping. They pointed out the, a couple of the good aspects of the ordinance, including adequate lot size, a requirement for animal identification, and requirement that more than one animal be kept on property because goats are social animals. I'll also point out and would like to offer thank you to them for their offer to teach a goat keeping 101 class in which they will cover adequate fencing, shelter, nutrition, and health basic, basic healthcare for goats if this ordinance passes. So, I do appreciate that offer from them.
What questions do we have for Peter on this? Anything? Okay. Shall we hear from the public? Okay. Who would like to speak to us on this? Remember, everybody gets one turn at the microphone unless the council member brings you back up to ask you a question. So, who would like to be first?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Jeffrey Huber, I'm a Ward Four resident. I'm here tonight, hopefully, to address some of the concerns regarding the perceived property devaluation of urban agriculture located in the city, and also to speak to economic opportunities that the Urban Agriculture Ordinance facilitates. There is no empirical evidence that shows that urban agriculture, an urban agricultural ordinance would decrease property values. On the contrary, evidence suggests the opposite. Furthermore, animal husbandry, as this ordinance has currently, is nowhere near the tipping points that would create a typical nuisance related to smell or noise. This is, excuse me, this is why the only notable evidence that I could find relating to livestock farming was with regards to large-scale industrial farming practices like concentrated animal feeding operations, where the economies of scale based on global market capitalism require corporations to either go big or go home. No one wants these concentrated feedlots for obvious reasons in the city, and the ordinance as currently proposed allows people a complaint-driven process if it was to become an issue. The opportunity here is for urban agricultural ordinance to enable an option for greater food production that is appropriately scaled to the city, but by no means displaces industrial farms that occur in more rural settings. The small-scale farms and gardens that would manifest themselves within the code would serve local niche markets and individual property owners and never arise to a nuisance when properly cared for. It's strange that in such a property rights-driven community, that we would argue that 80 pounds of chickens, the maximum allowed ordinance under, you know, if you had 20 chickens at four pounds apiece, we're talking about 80 pounds of chicken on the maximum lot size, that, or 120 pounds of goats would be considered more of a threat than the fact that currently the city code allows for one pet for every 100 square feet of enclosed space on a single-family residential property. Based on the current city code, I could essentially have 36 dogs on my property. The average of 90 pounds, I like labs, would mean 3,200 pounds of dog on my property. So, what I think is, I believe that you would much less be offended if I ate a chicken than if I ate my dogs, so, just want to make that a clear point tonight. And the point can be taken further in that keeping, you know, obviously keeping chickens, bees, and goats is not just a nutritional value, but there's also an economic value and benefit associated with it. So, getting back to the economics of urban agriculture, keep in mind, according to the American Farmland Trust, more than 6 million acres of agricultural land in the United States were lost from 1992 to 1997 alone. That comprises about 5% of our agricultural land. The city, you know, the city will essentially develop, double its footprint over the next 30 years, adding some 30,000 housing starts to a city that currently has about 30,000 housing units. You know, I wonder, could this be the city's best hope to align future development with agriculture? And why is that important? Well, some agricultural developments that integrate housing are actually increasing property values through what is referred to as development-supported agriculture, or also known as urban agricultural neighborhoods. Andre Stowani, a prominent architect, decreed that agriculture is the new golf. He points out that 83% of people living on golf course communities don't actually play golf. So, why the desirability? Urban agricultural neighborhoods, just like golf course communities, aggregate housing around shared open space amenities, in this case, a farm. Developers of urban agricultural neighborhoods are essentially ditching golf courses because they have figured out that unlike a golf course, which costs millions to maintain, a farm can provide attractive green space that actually earns a profit, not just for the farmer that works the farm, but for the property owner who supports the farmer through either subscription or leasing the land value of their property. In some cases, even tax breaks occur for preserving agricultural land. Urban agricultural neighborhoods provide residents with opportunities to participate in small-scale organic farming, but it is not required. Not everybody's going to be asked to have a green thumb now that we've passed this ordinance. Property owners within these types of communities can choose to farm, lease their land to the independent farmer through the, that manages the community's farming operations. This has become a way for communities around the country to preserve their prime agricultural land while making money off of that land. Keep in mind, this cannot occur with ornamental landscapes that we typically get in most subdivisions. I use developers here as the proverbial canary in the coal mine because, you know, developers with banks that fund them and lawyers that protect them are decidedly risk adverse, and their hesitancy to commit to anything unknown in one of the major, or anything unknown is one of the major obstacles deterring all but the status quo in city design. There are currently over 200 urban agricultural neighborhoods or development-supported agriculture in the United States. Places like Agritopia outside of Phoenix, where among turf grass lawns and craftsman-style homes, lambs roam, a common green area, chickens scratch at citrus groves, and residents tiptoe through rows of organic vegetables to see what might be good for dinner. These developments are thriving while others around them have failed. Property values in some of these neighborhoods are actually 20% higher than the surrounding communities, and that's according to Realty Track. I encourage you to look up developments like Saranby near Atlanta, Georgia, Prairie Crossing near Chicago, Hidden Springs in Boise, Idaho, Harvest in North Lake, Texas, and Newtown, St. Charles in St. Louis, Missouri. All of these are fiscally and socially conservative places, yet they see the economic value of urban agriculture. At Saranby, for example, there are 152 homes, all of them occupied, and have realtor waiting lists ready for any home that comes on the market. People want to live in these communities for the lifestyle and economic advantages that they provide, and this is the story of countless other developments like it. I want to leave on this note. Development-supported agriculture focuses on establishing a sustainable model of land use that preserves farming culture, agricultural land, food security, as well as resiliency, not to mention it also encourages a new generation of farmers. Agriculture is an amenity in cities. You can't just wish for it, you have to support it, and I do support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to us?
I'm Suzanne Clark. I don't have my lawyer hat on this time. I am here as a resident of Ward One, and I sent a letter to council this week with regard to my concerns about this particular ordinance, and as I mentioned, the only portion I am concerned about is the section on livestock. And the gentleman who did just speak, I think, raised some very good points with regard to developments that have been put in place, designed around urban agriculture. And when that's the case, that's wonderful because everybody who buys into that development goes into it knowing that that's where they're going to live, and they are like-minded in that respect. With regard to living by a golf course, we live by a golf course. That's where we bought our home, that's where we expected to continue to, you know, operate in terms of what our property values are and the expectations there. Putting 20 chickens and three goats next door will have a detrimental effect on our property value. It is not an urban agriculture neighborhood, it was not built around that, it was built around a golf course. And we've gone into whether or not this is truly about food insecurity and those sort of things, we don't need to belabor that. My issue is with regard to the property rights of folks who do not have restrictive covenants in their neighborhood, which we do not, and their expectation to be able to use and enjoy their property as they expected when they purchased it, that why should the property rights of someone who wants to put in 20 chickens and three goats be superior to someone who bought into that neighborhood with specific expectations? Now, I understand that there is a tremendous amount of support for this ordinance, and I think it's been pretty clearly, clear that it is going to pass in some way, shape, or form. What I would request that you consider is that because right now for neighborhoods that do not have restrictive covenants, we would be imposing essentially a zoning change to agriculture, agricultural, that there at least be an opportunity for notice and objection to surrounding neighbors, so that if a neighbor, my neighbor chooses perhaps to put in, and we all have more than an acre of land, if someone chooses to put in, you know, raise three goats and 20 chickens, that there is at least an opportunity for neighbors to state why they may not be on board with that. There are lots of neighborhoods, I'm sure, where the neighbors would not have a problem with it, and if that's the case, no harm, no foul, everybody moves forward as planned. But I do think for property owners who do have a legitimate concern with regard to their property interests, that there should at least be an opportunity for objection if that's going into the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne.
I have a question.
Yes, run.
Suzanne? Can you, could you go a little further with this and tell us how that would work? How would it operate?
I don't see where it really would have to be any different from any other permitting process, really, where if you were going to be building something on your property and you had to get a permit for it, and frankly, what we just talked about with the, with the mobile vendors, they had to provide notice. The person who was actually making application for the permit had to provide notice to surrounding businesses with respect to what they were going to be selling, that sort of thing, so that if there is a permit, and it would go to planning, really. If there's no objection, it would, it would pass. If there is an objection, there's at least an opportunity for a neighbor like me to say, "I'm not on board with this, and this is why."
And so, every person who wanted to do this would go through planning?
On the livestock section, I think, on the livestock section. And that shouldn't be a problem because, as I pointed out in the, in the first city council meeting, because of the concerns raised around the idea of people raising goats and property values, it was brought up that very few people are expected to actually do that. There was discussion about sister cities that have been evaluated, and only one or two people actually chose to put the number of animals in their yard. So, this, this should not be a burden on planning in that respect if, if what was proposed holds true. I don't think we're going to have 100 people rush out, rush out to do this, but, but that's, yes, anyone who is going to be putting those animals in the backyard would request a permit through planning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Suzanne? Thanks. Who else would like to address us on this?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Tracy Hoskins. Actually, wasn't going to speak tonight, but the first person that came up here and spoke, kind of actually said a few things that kind of hit home with me. Being a developer myself and a, and a owner of backyard chickens, I emphasize the word backyard chickens, fully fenced backyard chickens or whatever. And, and it also mentioned a, Saranby Farms, actually, is what it is, north of Atlanta, Georgia. We actually studied that community and actually went and visited that community, and it is a sustainable community. In fact, I, it's a little LEED-certified restaurant while I was there. And, and I don't know of any homes in that community that have livestock at their homes or whatever. It is a sustainable community, and they have a, what they refer to as a Saranby Farmhouse or whatever, where it's grown from plate to serving or whatever. But regardless of that, I didn't, I wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understood what that project was as far as its definition of being a sustainable community. And also, as far as the property values or what have you, being a developer myself, I would tend to disagree with the first person that spoke. I think that a limited amount of backyard chickens or bees or whatever, I don't think is a problem. I don't think it'll negatively impact property values. Goats, I've got a different opinion about that, but, but at least with the ordinance as it's written now, my understanding is that those will be maintained or, to the side in the backyards of a fully fenced yard or what have you, so, that makes it a little bit more palatable. One of the things, the issues that I had with the ordinance, having seen it before, was that the, the number of animals you can have is basically based on the size of the lot, the property, and, and I've always kind of had a problem with that because, you know, you could have a very, if the animals are going to be located to the side of the backyard of the house, and you have a, a property where the house is pushed way off the road and you have a very, very small backyard, well, by the definition of the ordinance, you can have lots and lots of animals because it's based on the size of your overall property, not based on the size of where these animals are going to be kept. And so, my concern with that is, and always has been, is... And so my concern with that is, and always has been, is overpopulation of the animals and the properties being properly maintained and the animal waste or whatever being disposed of properly and it not becoming a nuisance to the nearby neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Hi. I live about six blocks east of here, and I think for how many years was that cow over by off of Mount Sequoia? Wasn't there a cow in the neighborhood over the Poon Dixon and Spring Street? And I don't think that neighborhood was negatively affected by property values. Also, my neighbor has chickens and another neighbor has bees. And I'd hope that if we do have community input when someone wants to have livestock, that they have to prove how those, or demonstrate how those goats are going to negatively impact the neighborhood, like any more than a dog. If you have six dogs, 12 dogs, the gentleman said, what, 3,000 pounds of dogs? That's a lot of dogs. In my neighborhood, the big problem is not herds of goats, it was a herd of college students that moved in. And I can tell you, every neighbor in my, on my one block street would gladly trade our herd of college students for a herd of goats. So again, I hope we're not being very rigid with this ordinance if we do pass it and we allow people to show how they're going to be, again, college students, I was one once, how they're going to be negatively affected. I don't want the owners to be all on the homeowner that's wanting the goats. It has to be also on the homeowner who's preventing them or doesn't want them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Hello. My name is Marietta Camilleri, and I am a chicken owner. Well, right now, I'm not, but I will be soon again. And I'm seriously thinking about getting a beehive or two. And I've talked to my neighbors, and the ones that I have spoken to think it's a great idea. I've already went down to the university and took a couple classes in beekeeping, and until I'm educated enough to keep these bees, I am not going to attempt it. But I just want to talk about some of the benefits here. I read in the newspaper today that one out of five children in Fayetteville are going hungry. Well, think about it. I mean, I think there's some really positive benefits here. If we're responsible, we can do some really good things here with extra food. I mean, how many children go to school hungry? And having a few chickens and maybe a goat might make that difference. So anyway, I just want to thank you, and I hope that you look at all the positive benefits here. By the way, for those children that are going to school hungry or going to school to have breakfast, maybe it would save the state money for paying for those kids to eat, perhaps. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Who else would like to address this on this?
Hello, I'm Adrienne Seanfield. I'm a Ward Three resident. And last meeting, I spoke on behalf of Feed Fayetteville. And I just wanted to provide one anecdote. As I was walking out of the office today at the food hub, one of the neighbors brought up three dozen eggs to us from his backyard. So that will feed people right there, our neighbors feeding neighbors. Councilmember tenant, I think the last meeting, you said that this won't really have much effect on food security in our community. I beg to differ. For a family who only receives $127 a month in food stamp benefits, three dozen eggs at $4 a dozen, or $5 a dozen, depending on where you're getting them, $12 to $15 will go significant to help feed a family in our neighborhood. So, and I also just wanted to speak to the permitting process to getting livestock in your backyard. The cost is prohibitive for anybody that is actually doing this for food security reasons. The permitting process would cost them money that they probably don't have if they're trying to have chickens and goats to feed their family. And just as far as, this is a complaint-driven ordinance already, so that in itself takes care of that issue if the neighbors have complaints. And just anecdotally, myself, I'm a chicken owner, and I used to have a dog, and my neighbor complained all the time that my dog barked. Now, my neighbor loves me. We got rid of the dog, and we have four chickens, and we supply her with eggs. So my neighbors much prefer me to have chickens over dogs. Thank you very much.
Justin Hisk.
I have a comment. One is not related to you. The gentleman that was talking about eating dogs, he obviously hasn't traveled to some of the countries in Asia that I've traveled to, unfortunately. Haven't tried it yet, and I don't plan to. To your comment, though, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, or maybe I was or wasn't. My concern about this having an effect on hunger is based purely on my perception of participation. So if this does pass tonight, I hope there's high participation, and I hope that it adds to the solution rather than create a problem. So that, it's really a participation-based thing with me, is if there's low participation, then it may not have a huge impact for city-wise. That was, that's my only comment on that.
Yes, thank you.
But thank you for what you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And where's Washington County in food insecurity in the state?
We are number three in the state after Benton County.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Council. Mayor, my name is Don Bennett. I am the founder and director of Tricycle Farms, and I am living in Ward Two. I'd like to read a letter from someone who could not be here. He's the president of the Board of Tricycle Farms. He's also a real estate agent, and he's also up in Rogers receiving an award for Agent on the Rise for all of Northwest Arkansas. Dear City Council members, I have asked Don Bennett to read this letter on my behalf at the city council meeting on March 18th, 2014. My name is Jody Cohen. I'm the president of the Board of Tricycle Farms. I also currently work as a Realtor Sales Associate for Keller Williams Realty. I have held a real estate sales license since July 2010, and previously worked as an Arkansas certified residential real estate appraiser from January 2005 until June 2011. It is my opinion that the proposed urban ag policy will not have a negative impact on property values in Fayetteville, and to the contrary, could quite possibly increase them. A lot of people moved to Fayetteville, Arkansas because it is different and more progressive than a lot of other areas. The new urban ag policy is going to give homeowners more rights, which just adds to the list of reasons why people want to own property in Fayetteville. I speak with new clients weekly that are looking for property that allows them to homestead and possess chickens and goats. A lot of these clients also want to be in, as close to being in the city as possible. In fact, I received a call last week from a gentleman in Florida looking for exactly this type of property. He specifically mentioned wanting to have goats and chickens. This urban ag policy would provide the resident with a lot more options of properties that will work for his family's needs. I called two other appraisers with over 20-plus years combined experience in the area to get their opinion on the matter at hand. They both agreed that it would not have a negative impact on property values. One of them likened it to having a neighbor with a broken-down car parked in the driveway or an old RV. He also said, "What if your neighbor decides to paint their house black or blaze orange?" Property owners are allowed to do these things, but they are not going to do them just because they're allowed to. There are always going to be laws in place against nuisances. Therefore, the property owners that do decide to have chickens and goats will be responsible for caring for those animals just like a dog or any other house pet. The second appraiser, when asked about the urban ag policy issue, responding and saying, "I suppose I would rather have my neighbor have chickens as opposed to a loud-barking dog that runs the fence line constantly whenever I'm in my backyard." He also felt there to be no negative impact as long as the animals were properly cared for. I hope this letter helps to alleviate any concerns about property values in regards to the urban ag policy. Sincerely, Jody Cohen, Realtor, Keller Williams, in Fayetteville. And I'd just like to say personally, and speak to Mr. Tenant too, about the impact this has on the food insecurity. I mean, I started the endeavor in the middle of town, and it wasn't a community that was built around the farm. And I started because I was on food stamps, because I couldn't find a job that would pay what I needed to live on. And then I realized that so many of my own neighbors had the same issues. And I don't know how I did it, but I was able to purchase some property. Boy, I know how I did it. I refinanced my house, which was almost owned, so now I have to pay for it again, which I'm willing to do, and I'm willing to share it with my neighbors and what has happened and what has transpired. If you look at 2012, we had almost 14,000 volunteer hours, which is over $250,000 in, like, federal dollars, money that we won't ever see, but that's how they count it. It's hundreds, if not thousands, of people coming to a little two acres hidden in the center of Fayetteville to find out and connect to urban agriculture, and also to connect to the issues of food insecurity and food sovereignty and sustainability. I just want to say that it's impacted my life in ways I really can't explain to you. It's changed me on the inside. It's connected me to my neighbors. It's connected me to this council. It's connected me to the policy, or Urban Ag Policy Review Committee, who I really respect those colleagues. And I do appreciate, no matter what side of the issue you're on, your questions, your comments, and especially my colleagues in the way they came up with the answers, because the answers are there. And I think we provided everything we could possibly do to see this through. And I just want to thank you again.
Thank you, Don.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Quinn Montana. And I just want to speak briefly to the idea of sustainability when we talk about a sustainable future. In the broader picture, what we are really considering, and we do try to consider this here, is the quality of our air, our water, and our soil. And having animals in the yard will encourage the people who are raising those animals to not use pesticides, particularly having bees. The pesticide use is hugely detrimental and one of the factors that is causing the CCD and the bee death around the country. And so the idea of making people more aware of caretaking their property and doing things that are sustainable for their animals makes the connection that that is also sustainable for us, that that is healthier for us and better for us. And the idea, too, of the possible threat of bees, I just want to speak to that because in the 1800s, the actual density of bees in the U.S. was twice what it is now. So we look back historically, we don't really hear about cities being overrun or about, you know, the crisis of deaths that happened because of bees. I mean, it was just part of nature, and we've kind of gotten away from that. But I think that we could easily handle an increased density of our major pollinators without any real threat to people. And so I want to talk about just keeping our water clean. Certainly, if we talk about golf courses, that may be economically good for the city, but that is not at all sustainable for our water. Hopefully, addressing this in people's minds, getting people cognizant of it will make them, help them create a healthier environment for everyone in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this?
Hello, Mayor.
Here.
Hello, Council. I'm Sarah Lewis and Managing Director of Research and Integration at the Sustainability Consortium, and I wanted to come and speak in favor of the urban ag ordinance, really highlighting what everyone has said. But I want to remind the council, too, that this is something that I'll channel Bobby Farrell in saying that this is enabling legislation, and that is something that we can really and should really think about as something important for our community. It enables people to really support green infrastructure. So where we put a garden or where we have chickens, we don't cement. And that's a really beneficial thing for our water supply and also our soil. It's also a great way to educate our community. When you're out, it's a reason to get outdoors. It's a way to get people together. You've heard of great examples here, and it's a way to get the community engaged and a reason to bring people together. The other thing is the food security. There are issues around food supply around the world, and people need to, if nothing else, feel like there are options for food supply and other ways and means to get food if they need to. And in that, in and of itself, gives people confidence in their community, and it gives people confidence in each other, that there's a way to make a difference. And I think Don hit on that. And then also, I would say, I agree with the point that, of course, there may be issues as there are with all kinds of things. And we have other ordinances in place to allow for those kinds of protections. There are buffer ordinances, there are noise ordinances, and there are odor ordinances that if they need to be enacted and people need to complain about a particular issue that will be an anomaly in most cases, then they can, and that pathway is there. And this council has made those pathways available. So I'm supportive of it, and I appreciate you considering it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to address this on this? Okay. I'll bring you back to the council. This is on the third and final reading. What final comments do we have from the council on this? Sarah.
I just wanted to put this in historical perspective. I received this magazine, Arkansas Living, this is the March edition, and there was a really great article in it called "Planting Your Own Victory Gardens." And if you'll indulge me for a minute, I'd like to read a portion of this article by Sheila Yount. It says, "During the First and Second World Wars, America on the home front did all they could to support the troops overseas. They lived with rationing of many supplies, including sugar and gasoline. They collected cans and other scrap metals to make ammunition, and they planted victory gardens in their backyards, at schools and parks, just about anywhere a garden could be made. Censors from the U.S. government encouraged Americans to do their part with such slogans as 'Your Victory Garden Counts More Than Ever' and 'Our Food Is For Fighting,' and Americans responded. The iconic year of the movement was in 1943, and the actual statistic is that about 40% of the fruits and vegetables consumed on the American home front were produced in school, home, and community gardens. While they reached their peak during World War II, the idea for victory gardens began in World War I, first known as Liberty Gardens. And the U.S. government encouraged Americans to plant the gardens to help provide food for America's servicemen as well as citizens in Europe. Woodrow Wilson, who served as U.S. President from 1913 to 1921, urged America to go back to its agricultural roots at a time when industrialization was in full swing. Food security in World War I was a huge issue for America, and so Woodrow Wilson was very worried about food. Europe was leaning very heavily on the Allies because Europe wasn't producing because it was the battlefield. Wilson saw the issue of food production as a matter of national food security, and that is why he allocated funding through the War Department, now the Department of Defense, to fund the U.S. School Garden Academy. In addition to gardens at school, gardens were planted at homes on the National Mall in Washington, D.C., on railroad easements, basically anywhere there was room to grow fruits and vegetables. If you didn't actually plant a garden on every available plot of land, that was slacker land, and that was as bad as trying to dodge the draft. In addition to providing food for the war effort, Hayden Smith said, "The victory gardens of World War I helped unify the nation. About 20% of U.S. citizens were European immigrants, including Germany. Germany was a U.S. enemy in World War I. It was viewed as a way to unify all the people who lived in the nation around the common task of gardening. It was patriotic. By the time of the Japanese attack of Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941, the New Deal programs of the 1930s created to combat the Great Depression had transformed the nation's food system. And the focus shifted to nutrition defense because Americans needed to be healthy because the nation was on wartime footing. As in World War I, the victory garden program also helped build community spirit and raise public morale. In addition, the gardens helped Americans supplement their food supplies during the time of food shortages and mandated rationing. Leading the victory garden movement in World War II was First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt, who encouraged the creation of a garden at the White House while U.S. citizens planted gardens in their backyards, on rooftops of high-rises, and in vacant lots as well as schools. In Arkansas, Governor Homer Atkins declared February 8th, 1943, as Victory Garden Day to encourage Arkansans to join the home front food production effort, and they enthusiastically responded. Across the nation, about 20 million victory gardens were planted." And I think, looking back on that historical perspective, it's a good reminder that even though during my generation, this country has been fortunate and to never see war on our soil, but America is not immune. And I think back to 9/11, when, after the attack on the Twin Towers, the entire airspace of the U.S. and Canada was shut down for almost three days, and it made moving people and goods very difficult. And I imagine what would have happened, would happen if we were ever to sustain an act of terrorism directed at our transportation infrastructure. When the majority of our food is coming from places like California, or Chile, or any other place besides, you know, our direct region, how food secure are any of us? And I think that if we're going to be a resilient community, it's very important to not only grow fruits and vegetables, but also to include good protein sources like eggs and goat milk. And hopefully, we'll never need to rely on them for such reasons, but, you know, the world is in turmoil and things are changing, and, you know, we- world is in turmoil and things are changing and, you know, we need to look no further than the headquarters house to see that war can happen here. But coming back to this issue of food security now, and how does this Urban Agriculture Ordinance address food security? And I just would like to talk about that. And this Urban Agriculture Ordinance is about enabling people to bridge the gap between stagnant wages and the rising cost of living, between minimum wage and a living wage, between unexpected expenses and the next paycheck. It's about stretching a social security check a little further. It's about being able to subsist on unemployment while searching for a new job, or surviving long periods of underemployment, or supporting a large family on one income, or maybe just enabling the freedom to pursue a passion instead of a high salary. It's about being able to buy eggs from your neighbor instead of a factory farm, about knowing where your food comes from and being better stewards of the environment. It's about supplementing a meager meal with fresh fruits and vegetables and clean protein sources. But it's also about sundries and tomatoes, juicy watermelons, omelets with farm-fresh eggs and fresh basil and shaved cheese. It's about salads with crisp, organic greens with Arkansas black apples and crumbled feta cheese drizzled with local honey, and the idea that one shouldn't have to be rich to eat rich. Urban agriculture gives many people the opportunity to eat better than they might otherwise be able to afford to, and that's one of the, some of the many reasons that I support this ordinance.
Thanks, Sarah. Who else? Anybody? Okay. Well, this is the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
No.
Shopmar.
No.
Adams.
Yes.
Okay. Passes six to two?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. The next item we're going to, let's see, number four, amend 91.01, definitions 92.23, impoundment, and 92.24, redemption of animals. An ordinance to amend 92.01, definitions 92.23, impoundment, 92.24, redemption of animals of the federal code to authorize the animal shelter to accept livestock and to set the redemption fee for their release. Let's see...
It's on the second reading, so I need to go to the third and final.
Yes, I need a...
I move to go to the third and final reading.
If a motion is second, it goes to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
And ordinance to amend Section 92.01, definitions, Section 92.23, impoundment, and Section 92.24, redemption of animals of the federal code to authorize the animal shelter to accept livestock and to set the redemption fee for their release.
Okay. What do we have?
This is from Alderman Long.
Yes. Alderman Long, do you have anything you want to add or?
Nothing new to add, other than now that we've passed the Urban Agriculture Ordinance, I think that this is very, very important to enact as well so that our animal shelter can indeed accept these animals as well.
Any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
I have a comment.
I am, yes. More?
Of course, we have to pass this, but we also need to be, as City Council, aware that there's going to be a cost in enforcing this. We're going to have to have additional...
That's a good point.
...ways to take the livestock into the animal shelter. We're going to have to look to be sure that our animal shelter has the capacity in order to humanely keep these animals that may be impounded. So indeed, I support this, but I think that we do need to realistically be prepared to look at the impact that this is going to have on our animal control in the future.
That's a good point. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Long, do you have an estimate of what it is going to cost?
No, I don't. I've spoken extensively with planning and with Yolanda Fields, the Director of the Animal Services Division, and with Justine Middleton, the Animal Services Superintendent. I think they'll probably need a trailer of some sort because the current method of catching a dog or a cat would not work for that of a goat. Now, if it's microchipped, it could go directly back to its home, but if it's not, it would have to go to the shelter. So some sort of trailer, in my opinion, will need to be purchased and I've spoken with them about that as well. Jeremy, you might be able to speak to that a little bit more from the cost perspective because you probably...
Sure. I think the two primary things that we discussed, if this ordinance were passed, and really analyzing what we see in terms of increase in enforcement of goats are primarily the biggest thing we're concerned about, would be transportation costs and potentially a separate pen at the shelter. So those are two things that we have some ballpark costs on, but we really would like to see what the impact is before we go purchase a lot. We think we can, we think we have temporary measures in place now because we handle these calls now today, but if we certainly do, we're going to monitor and keep track of any spike in those uses in calls so that we understand if there is truly an impact, we'll be bringing back that in form of a budget adjustment.
I was just thinking, you know, there are many dogs that are much bigger than an 80-pound goat, so, and these are pygmy goats, which they're not the kind of goats that Alderman Kenyon grew up with, right?
Goats are crafty.
That's right.
And I'm going to stand by that part.
You don't care if they're pygmy?
I don't care.
Anyway, anyway, I'm glad to hear.
But I, you know, I supported this.
Sure, I support it, but I'm glad to hear that we're going to monitor and see what we need and possibly check with other cities who enacted these and see what kinds of modifications or additions they've had to make to their, to their equipment so they can handle the goats.
I would certainly have to agree with Councilmember Kenyon. I, too, was raised on a farm. I, too, have had experience with goats. They are climbers and crafty, yes.
Crafty, okay.
Very crafty. What other final comments do we have, Council, on this? Everybody good? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Okay. Under new business, number one, Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission contract. An ordinance waiving requirements for formal competitive bidding and approving a one-year contract with Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $46,766.73 for stormwater education program. Chip.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville, along with 17 other cities in Northwest Arkansas, has been operating under the Environmental Protection Agency's federally mandated Phase II stormwater regulations as municipal separate storm sewer system, an MS4. And whereas the Northwest Arkansas Planning Commission has determined that a regional approach to certain minimum control measures required for renewal of MS4 permits, specifically public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, and the education component of pollution prevention and good housekeeping is both logical, cost-effective, and appropriate, and this approach has been approved by the ADEQ. And whereas the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission has endorsed a proposal from the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to design and provide stormwater education program to all MS4s in Northwest Arkansas. And whereas the cost of the agreement to the city for 2014 exceeds $20,000 and would otherwise require competitive bidding unless the requirement is waived, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a memorandum of understanding marked as Exhibit A attached here, too, made a part hereof, between the city and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $46,766.73 for a stormwater education program provided by the University of Arkansas Cooperative Extension Service to satisfy portions of the EPA's Phase II stormwater regulations.
Okay. Chris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a contract that we've had since 2003. All the cities of the region have gone together to pay in to the Regional Planning Commission and they act as a clearinghouse. The U of A Cooperative Extension Service actually provides this service for all the cities. They provide stormwater education. They come to our city, give education to some of our transportation, water, and sewer staff. They have public meetings. They do all sorts of things to cover that educational component. So this is just a continuance of that. It's been a very successful program. The ADEQ has been very pleased with our method of handling this part of our permit and so we're recommending approval of this.
Okay. What questions do we have in the council on this?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Absolutely. This has traditionally been supported by the Water, Sew, and Solid Waste Committee, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to mention that.
Anybody else? What public comment do we have on this? Hey, Aubrey.
Aubrey Shepherd. Obviously, I was very much in favor of the thing that was just passed a little while ago for urban agriculture. And one of the keys to urban agriculture is managing stormwater carefully, keeping it clean, and urban agriculture actually can do that because the use of pesticides and herbicides is rare on an organic farm. It's not supposed to happen. So I would say that in addition to spending this money for professional guidance, am I away from the mic a little better? For professional guidance in educating the public, that we do more on government channel and, of course, volunteers do a lot of things on, and there are things about watershed, but we need to do more of it and share it in more ways because it does come down to individuals with their own property. And if you're gardening, whether it's for native wildflowers or any kind of flowers or for food, you need good soil. So good soil protects the watershed. Water soaks in. That means that we need to educate the developers. We need, we need a good article for the developers that are hearing this come to pass tonight about that agriculture thing, that they need to consult the people they're building for and find out, do they want soil that they can have some garden on or do they just want a dead lawn or gravel yard? Because the tendency is to red dirt the land and this is one of the things that watershed educators talk about the most, is protecting the soil where the water can soak in. And that'll come up in some other issues tonight. There's always an effect on our watershed wherever we do any changing of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. All right. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay. See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Do we reiterate the rules and go to the next reading?
Second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a one-year contract with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $46,766.73 for a stormwater education program.
Okay. What final comments do we have in the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Okay. Number two, U.S. Geological Survey. An ordinance waiving the requirements for formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with U.S. Geological Survey, U.S. Department of the Interior, in the amount of $21,528 for the operation and maintenance of three urban stream gauging stations in the city for calendar year 2014. Chip.
Whereas since 1998, the city of Fayetteville has participated in a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey of the U.S. Department of the Interior for the operation and maintenance of three urban stream gauging stations to record data concerning rainfall and runoff at Niocasa Creek and Gully Park, College Branch at State Highway 62, and Town Branch Tributary in Walker Park. And whereas the information obtained provides urban rainfall and stream flow data for future drainage studies as well as provides information for the city's EPA Phase II NPDES stormwater monitoring requirements. And whereas the cost of the agreement to the city for 2014 exceeds $20,000, it would otherwise require competitive bidding unless the requirement is waived, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves an agreement marked as Exhibit A attached here, too, made a part hereof, between the city and the United States Geological Survey in the amount of $21,528 for the operation and maintenance of three urban stream gauging stations in the city for the calendar year of 2014.
Okay. Chris.
This is another longstanding contract that we've had since 1998. It's with the USC. They maintain three stream gauges, as noted, do all of the work. These are actually put up on the website so anybody can take a look at them, look at the different flows. And when we do have rainfall events, especially large rainfall events, we can use these to sort of correlate the rainfall we got with the amount of flow we have in the stream. We always get asked questions, you know, what storm event was that and, you know, some of those kind of things, and that helps us answer those questions. And so this is just a recommendation to continue that relationship and keep these stream gauges in operation.
Okay. What questions do we have for Chris on this? Did I go through one or?
I just want to say that, again, water, sewer, solid waste supports this and it is important information that we've had a long time so that we can monitor the flow in these important creeks. And it's important whenever we look at the flow to validate the potential erosion on the streams and the velocity and the impact and changes we have over time as the community develops. So this is an important and certainly, we certainly get a return on our investment from this investment with the geological survey.
Okay. All right. What comments do we have in the public on this? See, now, bring it back to the council.
Maybe we go to the second reading.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with the United States Geological Survey in the amount of $21,528 for the operation and maintenance of three urban stream gauging stations in the city for calendar year 2014.
Okay.
Maybe we suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Okay. Number three, rural road car...